Good evening, I'm following the meeting, planning board for February 1st order, again with the world call.
Alden?
Here.
Jamie?
Here.
Heather?
Here.
Richard?
Oh, sorry, I couldn't hear you. Yes, here.
Rick is here, and Beck, and Don Walters are going to leave. So the first, just go quickly through the agenda. We have two public hearings on the agenda, one for Stephen J. Lewis, for a special permit amendment at 2 to 6 Market Street, and one for Ken Woods for a special permit for non-conformities at 20 Temple Street. We also have a request for minor modification at 3 Doyle Drive. The board is going to be discussing two potential zoning changes or sets of zoning issues within the outdoor seating and the business part, and we'll have a global address than any other updates from the chair or planning director. So we will begin with the 2 to 6 Market 3 project.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. At least immediately telling it cost a 30 Green Street on behalf of the applicant. As you might recall, we were in here four weeks ago seeking additional relief under the ITIF special permit ordinance, because at the time, we believed that we were only going to be able to provide six onsite parking spaces as opposed to the 11 originally permitted, and then we needed one additional commercial space. If you can go to the next slide, Andy. In the meantime, I just have to say a couple of things that were very important to the project happen. First of all, thanks to the zoning code enforcement officer reading our our analysis of the handicap parking space requirements. She revisited that with the plans to the building inspector, who reviewed it and understood that all 15 site, all 15 spaces for the project were not being provided onsite, and therefore, we fell under the requirements for any handicap parking space. So that requirement came off the table. In addition to that, and I'm going to talk about this in a minute, but Matt, pursuant to Mr. Coop's request and other members' requests, the architects, Matt and Scott, and the owner, Steve, contacted dozens more manufacturers and installers. And you need to know that, of course, the installer and the manufacturer both have to agree that the equipment can go in. As a result of that, they found a person from Connecticut with some equipment who came up onsite and with some modifications, which we can have Matt talk about if you'd like, agreed that they could install the lifts. And so the applicant can install five lifts, which would accommodate 10 spaces. And then there's an accurate space onsite, which was what the original plans were. It does not change the topography of the site. There would be modifications to where the lifts actually attach to the site. And again, if you want Matt to talk about that, we have that information here, because I know some people wanted more details. But now that we know that it can happen, I don't know, that's up to you whether you want that presentation. So if you go to the next slide, so you can see this was the original approved plan. You can see where the original lifts were required and the accurate parking spaces up Summer Street on that side. And then if you go to the next slide, this is, is that the next slide?
It's the next one.
Oh, yeah. So go to the, if you go to the next slide, sorry.
That's it.
Um, oh, I thought, I forgot Matt put all the slides on. So in any event, there we go. Thank you, Andy. This is the, it's the same thing, just a schematic of the various grade differences. But now those will all be filled with with lifts. And so we don't need relief for the residential units, which was part of the original permit. However, we are requesting for one additional ITF space for the commercial space, because the additional corn square feet goes over the amount that we had. And so we would request that that modification occur and that you issue a ITI special permit for that additional space. And with that, I can turn it over to Matt if the board has any questions about the details of how that is happening.
Just to clarify, so that that space with the handicap space, that's not going to be?
No, that's not going to be there. It's going to be a lot.
Dimensions of the space are shown there.
Um, that's other designs less. Okay, if you go to the last slide, Andy. Thank you. So there they are.
I think this is pretty simple. Do any members of the board have any specific questions about the proposed change plan? Richard, Alden, Heather, any questions?
Sorry, this is Richard. Only to add that this is great. We're so happy that the manufacturer was able to accommodate.
Yeah, I would, I do, I want to say that one of the reasons we, it took us so long is the efforts that Matt and Scott and Steve went through to address the issues of the board and find somebody that was as creative with them in order to make this work.
And just one, one other question that, just to, just to clarify again, this doesn't require any regrading of the existing concrete platform where the parking is?
Just quickly, I'm not going to just go from architects. So we're actually, we're actually going to use a combination of regrading each individual spot, custom shims, and also custom dry blocks that are going to be welded to the bottom left side of each lift essentially.
Okay, thank you.
So board members, do you have any other specific questions? I think we just move on to public hearing. I'm just hoping for other commentary. Are there any members of the public who's to be heard on this application?
I don't have any questions, but I, I think this is fantastic, and I commend them for going through so many channels to get this right.
Seems nobody from the public, I'll close the public comment and ask the board for your preferences. I guess the question would be, do you have a motion to, yes, to amend the buyer special permit or idea to change it from six basins to seven basins? And we could basically use the fire findings, adjust for the modification of the numbers. And that's it. It's just a couple of modifications to the fire findings. Would members want me to recite those or simple enough? Okay, great. So could I have a motion to amend the fire special permit to change the numbers faces for the idea from six to seven?
I'll make the motion, just describe.
Okay, then I will go through the local.
Yes.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Yes.
Need this room.
There he is.
Richard, are you with us?
I said yes.
We lost the connection to you. Thank you.
Okay, yes.
And Richard, yes.
Thank you very much.
Rick?
Yes.
I feel like I'm either losing the connection or there's, I'm having just a hard time hearing when it's not someone speaking at the podium. It's going in and out, I know.
Didn't you call me during my microphone?
I don't hear like complete sentences from you, and I know that you're probably speaking complete sentences. They're not coming through that way.
Just wait, wait your hand. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the request for Ken Woods at the 20 Temple Street for a special permit for non-renewables.
Yeah, I'm Ken Woods from 20 Temple Street.
Can you speak a little bit louder?
I'm Ken Woods from 20 Temple Street.
Would you want me?
We have a couple of slides up from your materials. Did you want to speak to those before? Just they have a summary available before.
Okay, sure. Okay, that's the site plan or plan view of the whole property. And the left-hand corner, as circled by the mouse, there's a seven foot by 11 foot second story addition and proposing over any one story existing footprint. Twelve square foot, about 80 square foot. So in this view, it's the existing on top from east and proposes on the bottom showing the additional that where he's mousing around, that is the proposed addition. It's to enlarge a bathroom that's in that area, so it can add a laundry. That's the rear view on top is existing. Yeah, the new stuff, he's mousing around the new proposed. It's about 11 foot wide and seven foot off the existing rear wall of the second story. That's the view from the west. Same idea, seven foot off the existing rear wall.
Do you have anything else you want to present to us or is that it?
No, that's. Is there anything more you need?
Will buy them.
Okay.
So again, so the board understands this, this is not the type of special permit that typically comes to us. As a special permit for non-conformities, that would be the zoning board would typically state, but because it's in the downtown, or really, or really district, it comes to the planning board rather than the zoning board. And so, any questions about the application from the board members?
Yeah. Just a couple of questions. I noticed that there are, let's see, there are no materials identifying on the building elevations. So could you talk a little bit about the existing clavvers and with the addition, are you intending to match the existing? What, what are the basic considerations that they propose?
Yeah, well, the building is originally 18th century. It was a salt box to start and turned into a gambrel form in 1767. In 1832, the two-story shed was added on the east side. All of it's in wood clavvered. All the windows are wood true divided light. Put true cedar shake on the roof and tend to match every aspect of what is there now.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the board? See anybody, okay? In that case, I'll open it up for the public hearing. Anybody from the public, which is to be heard on this application. Don't see anybody, and we have one person below the watching, but so in that case, I'll close the public hearing and suggest that we have a motion to approve special permit for non-conformities as or any other modification.
And we approve the comment for the material.
Yeah, so what does that, what do you, why don't you state the comment?
We add to the motion that materials on the addition will match the existing.
Duly noted.
The second.
I'll second, Alden.
Thank you. Alden?
Yes.
Well, yes.
Jamie? Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And I will guess also, so.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is request for a minor modification at 3 Doyle Drive.
Hello, Noel Theresa, I'm speaking for Jimmy Burke.
Could you speak about, maybe?
I'm sorry, I'm Noel Theresa, I'm speaking for Jimmy Burke.
I'm sorry, the closer you speak, I'm sorry for everybody, the closer you speak to the legs, the easier it is for folks to open. It's better, just because it amplifies voices.
So we were here last month and we were asked for better set of plans, which I believe we provided. We also provided, that is from all the others, that they saw the plans and that they approved. I'm not sure if you have the copy of that, but I do have a set of copies that I could ask you. You also have, yeah. So it's basically what we had spoken about last, it's a consisting deck. She wants like closing part of it to turn it into a three season room. All the siding moving will match existing to the home now. And the elevations show pretty much everything that we're doing. I don't know if there are any other questions or anything that I can help with.
Do board members have any questions about this application with new plans?
So just, just to confirm, you're using the existing concrete footings? And, and will the, the supports be changing or is it the existing deck supports?
No, the existing footings have, have bare footings that carry lower. The existing beam that you see in that picture where the dog is, the other one will remain as well. So we won't be disturbing the ground?
Any further questions?
Only to add, Rick, only to add comment that this is nice to have this level of detail and understanding of the project is a wonderful improvement from the initial sketch that was submitted. So we do appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
There are no further questions or comments from the board. I would like to have a motion to deem this request minor and approve the minor modification request for the 3 Doyle Drive with a definitive plan as a special permit as requested. So, opening some motions, we're saying.
I can second, Richard.
Thank you. Okay, I will go through the world call again. Alden?
Yes.
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And I will guess also. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, that was good. So now we move into other business, talking about the zoning, zoning discussion that Andy might go to consider. So you wanted to run the induction?
Sure, thank you. Members, I just wanted to ask, it's for our mention in the last meeting, just wanted to get your thoughts. If you have any particular, don't have time to, but just wanted to get any thoughts you might have on two specific areas, the business part, we're looking at trying to make some zoning adjustments there that may help to spur it out of there. A little bit more potential. And so I wanted to, you know, kind of throw anything out there, just kind of get if you had any thoughts based on what you have out there. What you see out there, what you'd like to see out there, if there's anything in particular that, you know, that you'd like to see, that you'd like to change. Just so I can keep that in mind as we're thinking on making those adjustments. And I'll report the chair, I want to, because I mean, this should be a, a little bit handle, but the other was just outdoor seating and the general context behind that one is just that, since the pandemic, there's been outdoor seating, obviously, a little bit more expansion on that. If you're trying to speak, that's a good thing, it adds to the vibrancy. On the downtown, for instance, we have, to be clear, see that over in some, some of the parplants that the city council oversees, as well as some of the public spaces like In Street, on the right away there. And we've also had a few private blocks where this has been done, essentially swapping a few spaces for the outdoor seating. And so the question here, just generally, you don't get a visa necessarily, but the question here, do you have any thoughts or preferences? That's how we handle that going forward. The area we're trying to address in the coming months, and we'll do some sort of zoning adjustment, and you've been talking with a few councilors about this, to try to work out the case, is trying to have something that actively covers in zoning, allows for that. And how that is particularly here, you know, in the public right away, the city council has jurisdiction over those, I can decide where you allow all any seats. But we're, we're on private property and they might be taking apart these spaces, for instance. You know, how do we juggle and balance those things? So if there's any flexibility in the park area requirements, or if there's a sort of preferential treatment allowing and encouraging, say, you have to receive, you know, in one or more areas of the city. Again, I think primarily the downtown, but, but generally speaking, we're not, you're benefit. Do you have thoughts about that? Do you have any promises how we handle that in a zoning amendment? You know, there's some sort of debates about a little particulars in there, but we want to have something in the zone that accommodates, covers that area. But I don't think the sideleng, that's probably through the implication for someone to have additional seating that can be an additional parking. But in the ordinance, and some, some owners can honestly buy that, it's a seasonal use, obviously. You know, while I already that's bringing a heavy season for, for traffic and so forth, but, but it's a seasonal use. And, you know, where would you like to see that, or my flexibility? And, you know, is that just where, where there's public spaces and for our private lives, I do have any promises of how that's included, whether we play words from that.
Let's, yeah, let's start with the outdoor seating as our first, that resist. Does anybody have any? I have some thoughts, but does anybody have any particular thoughts about how you think we should deal with parking requirements, particularly the parking requirements for outdoor seating?
I personally would advocate for maximum flexibility. In other words, if you increase the passing without receiving, I would not think that we need to.
Anybody zoom in, any thoughts like this? Let me, let me just say a couple of things that I, some of this stuff I've communicated to Andy already, and some of it I haven't. I guess, one thing I have communicated to Andy is, I am one who are very, very flexible. And reducing parking requirements, especially in downtown, wherever it was. So I, I also feel that if you're not doing something on your own property, doing something on public property, there shouldn't necessarily be parking requirements. So if you take over a parking space or a piece of a park, you're not, it's, it's not on your property, so zoning really doesn't apply. Because it's a use of public property. So my sense generally is, for the easy one, which is the downtown one, working on a, on a street, I would not impose any parking requirement for that. The more difficult one is where somebody is taking a piece of their parking unit and and putting outdoor seating on it, because that's doing two things, it's adding, adding theoretical capacity and reducing their brightness spaces. And that's, that's more difficult. So I think that, and that really does the one reason. So I haven't, I haven't really figured out exactly what that is. But it's, again, it's not just a matter of adding the parking spaces for the, the outdoor seating. It's also figuring out what, what that outdoor seating is doing to the parking that goes for the indoor parking spaces, in the spaces way. And actually, I did some research, and it's amazing the variety of places, variety of places there is. Some places say we're going to charge the parking, or outdoor seating, which is sort of one extreme. The other extreme is, we're not going to do, in Los Angeles, for example, exempts all outdoor dining areas and all unused decks and batteries. That's the other end of them. And in between, there are, there are jurisdictions that have some type of exemption. And with three, like kind of pulled out, Paradise County, Virginia, Virginia exempts up to 20 or 32 outdoor seats. Depending on the size of your restaurant, you could have 20 or 32 outdoor seats and have no parking. Fairfield, Connecticut, it's 400 square feet, and I, California, it's 1000 square feet. So there's a whole range of things, like, again, I think we need to look at the kinds of places that we have that might do this, no park lunches is one example. But there might be some, who knows, the sub shop market basket class that might do it.
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah, right, two seconds, two, right, right, yeah. So in Starberg Dam is a different situation, because it's, it's not even on the street, it's, so, so, so I think we probably need to look at all the individual bases for what makes most sense, but who would. But I would, I would take the position, which I think is, you're saying, is particularly for, you're taking, putting a product in the parking space, putting tables in, that we wouldn't charge the parking.
I, I hear the same thing. I, I would, I would support and encourage outdoor dining solutions. Which I, I think it's a huge plus for the city. And, you know, I think in the, in the limited situations where, where seating might provide existing parking spaces. You know, I, I, I think on a face by face basis, might be solutionless for the, for that. And then you can develop, depending on what business you're talking with. But I, I think, I think it's worth looking at what, what the creative solution might be to use that for the parking. But I would encourage the, the, I was, I was a huge success.
I think one of the concerns about taking away parking is that you're, you're turning, you have to have some process, some procedure to allow that in zoning, because right now, the restaurant, you know, has a certain number of seats or certain amount of square footage. It's required of a certain number of parking spaces. So, so if you're taking those spaces away, either it has to go through the zoning board, the variance, or we have to have some type of process where either the city council or the planning board, or the zoning board, ran a special permit. And that has to be put into the zoning, it can't. You can't just do, it's a, it's a seasonal use for those space. So I have heard. Memorializing.
And we can currently, specifically with the chair, as I said, and I fully support, you know, the other comments, the other house, encouraging that proceeding generally. Aside from it, the particulars of debate, the smaller pieces, but I think I certainly agree with that. I just just note that, you know, there's a, maybe perhaps a debate to be had about whether or not we would want to do that by special permit. And I say that mainly because we have followed the seasonal nature here, the timings and so forth. Whether or not we want to have a more expedited process by which we would agree, but still covering it under zoning. So perhaps it's a review process, but it maybe doesn't, we don't necessarily want to improvise a level of special permit or by comparison, more of a process. And especially given the sideburns involved, maybe more problematic, it's, we can't really do it as, right? So we may want to move through the same process, you say review, you know, or similar people process, or whatever, but not, maybe not necessarily move by special program.
Yeah, something, somehow we can put it in there for temporary uses, go around to.
Right. The other thing I would know too is about the parplants and the public space, you know, the city council uses, there is already, just to bring it over to say that. If the city council feels that there's an impact, it's vulnerable, it's all, it can say, no, the parplants are on the seating, or balance it out in some way. So it's not a separate, there would be process for that, and the seating for the impact it may have, if the city council has that jurisdiction. So to me, that doesn't, you know, suggest it would make a concern. It's more a question to me about the private blocks where there isn't a direct oversight by the city council or some other entity, but it can sell out on holiday or come back and so.
And, well, do you think, I guess that's a question, do you think we need to cover in zoning something that doesn't pay a big place in private blocks?
I don't think it's bad, it's probably used, sort of, as a relevant suspenders, but I think it's profitable here, given that scene is in. seating is in directly or directly associated with that use of private property. That I agree with your, your comment about being in the public space about why. Um, but because that seating is essentially an extension of that use, I think it's building suspenders, probable revolting applicants and operators as well as the city to document, as you have said, formally, where there's that, so they're busy there to dispute, uh, especially, you know, there's various different businesses doing it. There's no question about whose law it's due, why. So here there'd be, uh, public recognition, uh, in that.
So, so we could say in the zoning, specifically say the zoning that spaces that are permitted by the city council to or the party's mission, whichever it is, to operate on public property are specifically exempt from any Austrian private ones. And then, you know, there's no need for any role by the planning board, it's only, it's just the same concept.
Agreed, agreed. One, one non-marking, the way the issue, um, just in terms of, you know, the appearance of these, uh, particularly in, in critical areas in the center of the county. The parliaments, it was a pretty good job this year, we're creating platters as, as an initiative. If we, I, I think those are moving, you know. Do we want to say anything about outdoor seating, um, quite about the, in the downtown, those, that, that we would actually like to see one of the cities?
It's a good point, and you know, in a public right of way, yeah, I think we'd agree at least, uh, in a way that would be this, likely, I think, the city council. As you call, wherever wanting to do buses to be, but, you know, again, the city council has some ability to oversee that and make sure it's done properly at the public spaces. Uh, but whereas our private property, perhaps we want to put some sort of provision in there that, um, clarifies how that review or confirmation done, that is not a sight. Of receiving here, and the one that blends with the parliaments, you know, one on, danger one. Yeah, so perhaps we put some language or provision in there or another, then, uh, you know, compels that to be addressed as part of the outdoor seating, or whatever it may be. Thank you for bringing that up.
Would there be any other comments about this issue?
Thanks, everybody.
So next issue is business. Do you have that, my, uh, slide, or your picture, or?
Oh, my apologies, I can just pull that up, sorry.
I did have, I, I went through the, the, I, I, I want an I one B districts and just identified all of the different, um, uses that are not typically industrial uses. Or you know what that was, uh? You know, um, it's about, see, before that, that's. I think I had the last. There you go, uh, this is, right, so.
Oh, there you go, thank you.
So, uh, this chart, maybe a little bit of the, but usually I have one, uh, district in the white pink and I have one E, this district here, the dark pink. And just kind of going from left to right, um, you've got two churches. You've got a hopefully future site of, uh, number one youth services. You've got the charter school, daycare, um, you've got the, um, Elks, I guess, the function of all, great, uh, baker space, brewery, dentist, baker, retail bakery, another brewery, medical offices, two gyms, another brewery, uh, two housing developments, building down the bottom development. So, so it's, uh, it's a lot of stuff that isn't typical for industrial park. And, and so it's, it kind of creates this cluster all the way. And interesting, and this going back in history, and so two thousand and four strategic areas. One of the recommendations was to create a new transitional zoning district along the south side of Rose Street, Hill Street, Route One. So, so we're right there, um, we're going with a third of them. So it seems, and, and I started going through the uses. And there's, there does seem to be quite a bit of flexibility of the uses that are allowed. Although there are a number of things where I would almost suggest that a special permit will change through other rights. Um, some of them being, uh, medical office, for example, is, is special permit use and could give you just a slight time review. Um, the, um, professional and social services, there, I would say, some of the, a lot of uses that are, that are kind of, uh, public oriented uses that are special permitting, this is right, right now, the, and they're confined to shift to, to, as a right. But I would do it in the context of not putting the entire I district, or just those transition areas. Because I think one of the concerns that some of the industrial uses I've had is having too many people coming in, too much visitor, visitor traffic and, uh, conflicts between truck traffic and, and walkers and bicyclists and so forth. So, um, I would, I would suggest that we look at, kind of building these outlines here into, uh, we don't really have to do it on the right hand side, because that's all the, the smartest just way down there. But maybe thinking about that, that one was along those streets, think about creating some kind of transition district there. And do you know, um, Emmy, what the history is between dividing, or what I want to be, I want, why the uses might be slightly different there?
Um, I know it has to do going back, I don't really exactly know, but I was, yeah, this, like, variation back then, but, you know, I remember where , um, it wasn't resistant from the A folks, there was, you know, probably a debate at one point about, you know, transitional mixture of uses and, uh, righty. But, um, we've seen that kind of, you know, I would say you practically fade in the background a little bit, as, as far as I can start. I think there's still a concern there for someone further into this, but, uh, well, I don't know this specifically, I just want to be put into that a little further. The origin to that, um, there isn't a whole lot of rationale to be in the category of charter extension. Um, and I, I really get the idea, so we'd be perhaps working off the center line of the roadways. Uh, you know, like craft room, for instance, and recognizing that, you know, we can have a transitional zone, it's pretty, starting to establish itself already. Recognizing that, and maybe that more consistent of allowance as a transitional zone from, you know, the residential part of the little four yard district actually to your business park, not, I mean, just a shark, you know, mixed, to the family to the business park, actually having a transition that will. Uh, and then start recognizing that that's actually already been a fair amount of migration from the craft road area, where isn't that custom already, uh, businesses?
I guess I'm wondering whether, if we were, if we were looking at creating a transitional district along the north parliaments, whether it makes sense to kind of hewish the I one, the I one B, because I don't really get a sense to just have my strip.
I, I do agree with that entirely, uh, you know, I have to say, when I worked with this, for the city, it wasn't, you know, looking at uses there and everything. Or estimates, uh, venture standard uses for, uh, there really is much need to have this engine there that way. However, here, I think maybe more diagnosed, the fact that there is maybe a new purchase, maybe some industrial, you know, uh, like uses everywhere. Or here, activities where they don't want a lot of traffic versus ones that you want already have to some degree, and two, maybe one as a transition. Do you want, you know, smart one, different?
Can I ask a question? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
I'm having a hard time hearing you guys, so this, you may have already said this. When you're talking about creating this transitional district, are you talking about only within this red dotted line? Are you just highlighting these as examples of the industries that are already transitioned? Like, are you saying that we would expand it, or are you saying that we would limit it to sort of this footprint already? Yes, thought?
I want to be correct, I think Rick was highlighting what's there already, and I think, uh, I must be correct, but my sense, that it sounds like right, you mean, there's a main link. Is that we're really thinking about it as a quarter or a section as opposed to just restricted dotted areas? But actually, maybe, you know, that piece would extend that wrap really, maybe extend to the four yard district. Uh, as opposed to being exclusively within the red dotted areas, I think that point, perhaps in the show, the, the package is already, um, you know, compliments of some of the uses there already. But, um, one could argue that it should be a continuous, you know, district or section, not just, you know, these blocks that are block on here.
No, I, I think that, um, I would, if, without looking very carefully at what the uses are there and perhaps even talking to some of the property users, um, I'd be hesitant to expand the district to include, for example, to take the lumberyard, try to add it to the district. That requires, whether it is really oriented toward customers, so, so I think toward, toward regional customers. So, I mean, there are, there are uses in here that are on the, on the margins, I would say, between public oriented and just wholesale business oriented uses. The lumberyard is one, is a plumbing supply place, uh, down on Parker Street, there's plant works, which is kind of an office use, but it's also kind of a commercial greenery kind of landscaping place. So these areas, things that merge, so. What I would think, I think we need to look at, I guess that's all I'm trying to say is, I mean, there are areas that have already changed where it's pretty, in some way, pretty easy to say, let's zone it for what's there. And then there are areas in the middle, which are between the two red outlines, where I don't know what the answer is at this point. I think we'll need some study to look. So that makes sense to you, Heather?
It, it does, my only, so my thought is, when you, when you look at this, this has established itself somewhat organically. Like, these, these businesses have come to these locations for what, you know, needed more space, needing more parking, whatever it might be, or the price was right. And they've chosen to be in this area as opposed to our other areas downtown and whatnot. So my thought is, though, if, if we create this district, you know, I guess, we would be prepared that at some point, like, I'm pointing down towards opportunity wave with my finger, so I'm just saying, like, so organically, some other businesses might cluster in another area of the park, so then would we be, be like seeing in the future that we would be expanding this transitional area, or, or, or having pockets in other areas over time? Because it may not just grow out of this one section, you know, that the whole, the park just may change as needs change. Right?
Long term, I guess I didn't see this sort of the near term, maybe, you know, next decades, there's the, uh, the city would benefit from this sort of transitional. I think to your point, it's very possible long term, because, you know, um, you know, we don't know necessarily for the other decades, you know, ahead. Uh, there certainly could be more pressure avoided to, you know, consider things further apart. Um, I'm just thinking that in the near term of, you know, years or decades, it, it may not be that, uh, pressing or that likely that it's going to expand that, or that we would necessarily want to expand that, expand that far in. So I definitely think you're right, that we may eventually want to work at something like that, but I don't necessarily think we're close to that right now, that kind of area. I tend to think it's more towards, as I was just, as you guys hear, the, the northern part, the eastern part, the part general.
And when you say transition, are you talking about use? Like, is it, is it more of a customer focus use, is, is something that addresses the street, you know, you like to, and then maybe something that, that talks about suffix, you know, that part of this, but, and are, are you all still talking about adding different uses to that thing, or?
Well, I, I guess I would be thinking about making sure that the uses that are, have been established over time, however they were established, the schools have come in, in some way, um, the, you know, medical services have come in by special permits. Um, I, yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how these have come in over time. I'm thinking that we would want to be thinking about this area as, okay, user uses that have, you know, let in some, like, there's variances of special permit or something else. Uh, and you, you're working, so let's recognize that the table of uses, just look at the, um, coverage requirements, parking requirements, and I think, start thinking about the fact that we're going to want, be wanting to be serving these uses with sidewalks and bike lanes and that kind of, so because you want people coming there. You don't want necessarily encouraging.
You want to connect these sets, and then really what we're talking about is how it makes use, basically, when we're sort of, you know, industrial park, maybe that the palace of the park is more focused on pure industrial use. But in this particular area, because it's oriented patient for some of the familiar streets in this part of town, it, it makes sense that there's, but more flexibility potentially. And that, but maybe you start to encourage a pedestrian environment, so it's not just individual parks only. And there's, there's no kind of difference between, so I, 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 I think, uh, you know, I think with, I, I don't think it can be extensive, I think you can, you can create the potential for extension and growth over time. There's always so much energy to, to all of this, but I think it's a really good idea, that most, perhaps, really, just, uh, to start concentrating more on, to use that.
Hey, we should hear your feedback, it's all.
You have a question? Yes.
Does the public bus come into any of this currently? Is there a bus stop anywhere?
It doesn't now, but we have, continue to have ongoing discussions about the routes and, you know, it's obviously quite a bit of a problem. And their service, can we change the route of the service, and only people are actually, you know, taking advantage of it, utilizing the service. Right now, we don't have that strong connection, but maybe to the point, that's something that could help, we just are working together with people, you know, to evolve over time. Um, you know, and partly depend on us to generate, you know, the demand, um, at, in turn, a little bit of that, to adjust the rules.
But it makes sense if they're serving train station and if they're serving a hospital, somehow it would be some kind of, you know, reserves.
Right, and I think in, in some ways, we're trying, I think, you know, maybe, we're trying to establish maybe a better linkage between a residential, you know, mixed use district, a transit oriented district, a greater on the train station, and the employment center, the business park device, and not having it be just completely isolated, excuse me, you know, uses as you have it, you know, going to zoning.
They weren't you, you know, with, with, multi-family, it was, it was.
And that is not on my radar right now, uh, you know, it may be, you know, like others said, it may be something long run term to see, though, uh, go to. But I don't necessarily see that on my radar, or something that, uh, others, you know, in terms of the doctrine process, that's not going to be out right now, or our state.
Twenty-four seven environment, sidewalks, and the best, you know, all, all of that is reinforced, and some really, and that would be eventually. So it does have parts that need to be, kind of, the brain stitch, you know, inside, right, actually, it goes pretty good. I mean, for multi-family houses, it's areas on this, that, that, since.
Yeah, and I can see that as perhaps, you know, maybe a longer term or a secondary consideration, but I don't know, but you mentioned, but I, you know, it maybe goes to the point here, maybe goes over to the NBA, NBA, these guidelines, we're going to be looking at this later in the next year, uh, because we will have a look at our four yard district, according to the state. And, um, we'll get either modify that or build up with that, to have more residential, it's loud, quote unquote, as it right in proximity, and maybe this area is one of the, for two, uh, to your point.
I, I could imagine that we could be faced at some point in the future, the, the looks, that kind of saying, oh, what do we do? A piece of property here, we might have to move out, and then, right, then you can recreation facility across the street, and probably housing across the street. Now, the train station's so close, so there could be a lot of pressure to one, one, that, that. So, so I, I think it's something we shouldn't, I think it'd be, just remembering when we tried, uh, early planning around the train station, the industrial park was so close, and I get, maybe housing, oh, because of the conflicts between industrial uses and, and residents feeling the residents complaining about the noise and orders from the industrial park. And how we're not housing there, so that's kind of the first point of the door, you know, and you can start.
It's not a long time. It, it is a point, no, really, but we had, uh, when the one loss in Wayfair, I couldn't be done. Uh, we actually had, yeah, the, the, here, we, we did, you know, I think there was a, in that project, and it actually resulted in one story being less of a building, more students. Um, and, um, you know, we, I think at the same side, I would necessarily see that as a big point of conflict, we, we was very clear, we were trying to establish a resident there, right, around the train station. Um, but, um, you know, that was actually after the private restriction of the property, um, going back, but the, uh, the bottom line, I guess, is that showed, we did write that a little bit essentially to me. And that's why I think it might be sort of a phase approach, or maybe something, we just, we did not, so certainly make drastic changes, but just kind of incrementally over there, we're getting, like, a little bit more formally zoning, but organic over time involving this area. And it, it might just, you know, expedite a little bit, maybe, you know, use, uh, requirements, um, you know, a discussion resulting in this area. Um, but, um, we still might have a few folks with business partner, concerned of, you know, the type of traffic there, you know, in the park, in the area of the park.
I mean, the way that you're talking about it is. Higher density in, in these transitional areas. And, you know, and then you get to the rest of the, the rest of the, and it kind of was going to listen to what you're getting. But we do know the dotted lines, you know, there's. You know, kind of in a way, when they're underutilized, personal, and higher density makes use of there.
I think another point based on just what you said is that there's been a lot of significant amount of recent. Reinvestment, the new investment in the real part of the industrial park. And opportunity way and so forth, and it hasn't been that's that much in that northern area. And, and it's partially, it's partially lot configurations, uh, partially revenues and so forth. But I think this is less likely, because I've been not invested, this happened to some of the beauty and the fashion, so it's. You know, it's kind of more rusty part of the industrial park, this is, but you're probably more less likely. To be looking for a different types of uses if they're doing a lot of investment. I have noticed, you know, it's inside, I'm not sure, a map goes down that part of it. Yeah, actually that last building, uh, opposite, you know, Malcolm Way Road. Uh, that, that building right there, there's some non-business type uses in there that was. Maybe a hotel facility or something, so that's the kind of transitional, right?
Sure. And that one, I don't know the origins of that off my head. Uh, there are a few others, but you had, you know, like you said, it's been a sort of fish matches now, things like that, whatever, but there and so forth. That one, I don't know off the top of my head, but, you know, that, there has been an evolution over time, those things. Uh, we haven't necessarily seen, you know, business park, uh, you know, robbers coming out and opposing everything. But we have seen about, you know, most of the some, uh, of these things.
I think it's, I think it'd be really important to come up with first in sexual ground. And then come a meeting of those industrial property, understanding businesses. We can't give a deep, because we certainly don't want to be seeing this imposing something on any big, right?
Agreed, agreed. And actually, one of the things that I need to turn over the chain on is, uh, trying to, let's say, reestablish the business park association that kind of is a lot of it last couple of years. But to try to see if we can, you know, bring that group together, so we actually have more or less a unified voice. We either focus very well, that's acceptable, as it is having, you know, a hundred different, you know, communities or already get their attention to communities. Uh, we used to be able to have, so we were, we were integrated together and there is a secret chunk of representatives kind of folks. Um, here we have to try to reestablish that a little bit, because that's kind of this a lot of, you know, there and, and sort of get, um, you know, a voice or. Meeting together again, it's here, we have an association that they have.
Any other, any other thoughts?
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. So then the last item on our agenda, our last, oh, I didn't see, oh, I should actually say. So, uh, approval of minutes, we have the minutes of the, uh, a very brief meeting on January eighteenth. Right. Does anybody have any comments or questions or edits for them? I, I have none. If not, I have a motion to approve this, the minutes are generating. Thank you.
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Thanks.
Yes.
Bob.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Yes.
Good job.
Yes.
And I wrote, yes, also, so the minutes are approved. Okay, updates, yeah.
Uh, just two things, like I said earlier, the M B T A or D H G guidelines for M B T A movies, um, you know, they are requiring us in essence to allow. Twelve hundred ninety-two minutes in close proximity, so to speak, to the train station's own flexibility and, you know, provisions in there. Um, a little bit more flexibility of the guidelines D H G had originally issued. Um, so we have a little bit more control and more flexibility, but, uh, we'll have to work closely with, uh, plenty more members that are, uh, ready. And all that I agreed to kind of provide us or work to just start this off, but to put together some options here, a lot more listening to councils as well over the next two years. To adopt zoning pursuant to the housing, um, choice statute and D H G guidelines. To encourage more, uh, for, for national, right, residential, uh, most parts of the train station. We have some flexibility, we're looking at, say, the number one, or even the story out of the area. Uh, we have to talk about where we want that to happen and, um, meet the state's requirement, um, and do so in a way that's sensitive. So, uh, working on that. Uh, the other piece I would mention, the chairman's going to mention this as well was. Uh, it looks like we're looking at the March first meeting to do, um, two things. One is the player membership adjustment, which we focus on again, a general, a limited segment, um, sort of together, it's a zoning piece, yeah, that we join here on the general organs within. Um, and then also, uh, the policy sponsor, a amendment to the I C I F. Uh, and this is actually going back to the two second artist, yeah, page, who's here today. Uh, he was the last meeting, we saw some concern from him, and certainly no concern from anybody here about granting an I C I F special permit for residential uses. Uh, now, now, um, as different maybe saying more commercial uses. So, um, he sponsored an amendment, I put together an amendment, uh, where then he's putting together an amendment to, um, to remove the allowance for residential. But there for commercial, I think that's perhaps more consistently, the claim that was looking at your, in terms of the two parts, the market street, where there's a, a level of comfort of. Uh, hanging the plan and utilizing for commercial uses, but not necessarily, um, creating the problem of we have new residents or. Don't, you know, okay, or how they are using the public spaces and then essentially displacing the existing residents that park in residential streets. Uh, there isn't necessarily more of that part of the residential, uses of lots anyway. Um, and, um, and it does have even the town though, in the public spaces, it does create practical reality, which is a little bit more closer to the people tree. And then you're essentially, um, competing against those who already have that in the basis. So, uh, this amendment would essentially remove that residential piece, take away the, you know, maybe you might even have to have a residential, like permits there. That, um, allows for the commercial end of that.
That was, that was what I was going to bring. Anything else that anybody would like to raise before we adjourn? Not, I have a motion to adjourn.
Sal second, Alden. Yes.
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 And I wrote, yes, also. And, uh, I hope those of you were recovering at home, feel better soon.
Yeah, thank you.
Good night.